First item on the open work session agenda is the proposed easements for electric vehicle charging stations at Arthur Purdue Stadium, Wycomico County Youth and Civic Center, and the Salisbury Airport. Mr. John Petito I know is here, saw him sitting back there with guests. Steve Miller I know is here, and Tony Rudy from the airport is here. John, how are you?
I'm good, John. How are you?
Very good. Probably.
Thank you for having us this afternoon.
Don't let Neil come up.
He's backup.
State your position, your title, and your name and your title down for the public.
John Petito, External Affairs Manager, Delmarva Power.
Steven Park, Manager of Project Execution for PHI.
Thank you.
And we're here to talk about the EV charging stations program that we have, and I'm going to let Steven do a quick overview in case you guys haven't been able to look at the pamphlets, the information we've sent.
Thank you again this morning for putting us on the agenda this morning. Before I present the details about Wycomico County station proposals, I do want to give you a little background on our program, what that EV public charging program is for. This was ordered by Maryland Public Service Commission. On January 14th, 2019, Maryland Public Service Commission issued Order Number 88997 to a number of Maryland electric utilities, which included Delmarva Power, to install a set number of charging stations within their service territory. And they also gave us definite set of rules and guidances to abide by. So this is a five-year pilot program to encourage and expand EV public charging stations in the state of Maryland, and to propel the progress of the state's energy and climate goals. Delmarva was ordered to install and operate 100 charging stations by end of the five-year pilot period. All charging stations must be installed and operated in the government property. It has to be owned or leased property, and also needs to have a 24-hour access to the property by the public. Utilities also need to consider the economic and geographical equity dispersion of the charging stations when working with the government agencies. And Delmarva looks at the potential utilization of the EV charging stations for the EV communities and convenience of the travel routes, but we've also placed a segment of the charging stations in rural and economically depressed areas where the private entity will not install charging stations to. The one benefit is there's no charge to the government properties or entities who is going to be hosting these charging stations, and all of the installation costs of the entire charging stations will be on Delmarva Power, and also the maintenance costs as well. Currently, stations are set with a kilowatt hour rate, which was approved by the Maryland State Public Service Commission, and cannot be changed without approval of the PSC. So the current rates are 18 cents for Level 2 and 34 cents for the DC fast chargers. This means that, unlike the gas pumps, we're not going to see a fluctuation of the rates anywhere you go. You're going to see the same rates all over. So just to give you a little bit of an update on where we are right now, out of the 100 charging stations we're supposed to be ordered to install, we're operating 72 charging stations on 32 different locations in Delmarva Territory. Actually, the Wycomico County, we have a number of installations in the city of Salisbury and Salisbury University, where if you look at Delmarva, then the most utilized stations are here. So it's a good opportunity for Wycomico County to partner with us. And we're currently engineering and constructing five stations and in closing agreements with the Maryland State Highway and Ton of Snow Hill for 11 additional stations. So we're very close to the end of our 100 coda, and we're here to propose six charging stations on three different locations that you've mentioned already. So the first location is Arthur W. Purvis Stadium. We're proposing to install one DC fast charger and one BTC Level 2 charging stations. Our BTC Level 2 charging stations have two ports per station where two vehicles can be charged at the same time. So when you install one DC fast charger and a BTC Level 2, we're looking at three vehicles being able to charge at the same time. And Youth and Civic Center, we're proposing two BTC Level 2 charging stations where four vehicles can be charged at the same time. And I really personally like that area location because of the community center there, and while the citizens, our residents are utilizing those facilities, they can charge their vehicles. The last location we have, the Salisbury Airport, for two BTC Level 2 charging stations, where four vehicles can be charged at the same time as well. So lastly, just so you know, what is the benefit to the county? I mean, the first and obvious thing is that it increases stability in charging stations for the county residents and visitors. The next thing is really upfront cost. So installation and entrance costs are free to the county. And just to give you a little bearing about how much these things cost to install, the Level 2 charging stations that we're installing, and this is our cost, right, in our experience, we're looking at $62,000 per charging station. And when you go into DC fast chargers, we're looking at $105,000 for each. So this is, for any jurisdictions to take up on their own, it is a pretty high cost to start. The other thing is, if the county's looking at, if you feel looking at expanding EV fleets in the future, there is a discount program for the fleet vehicles. Whenever you're using DC fast chargers that we operate, you can get 25% discount on that. And right now, currently, we have two at Salisbury University. We're going to install one more at the MVA office, and then we have one proposal at the Purvis Stadium. And lastly, if you don't want to, we don't need to have DC fast charging capabilities, but as your EV fleets grow, and I've seen this in other counties in our jurisdictions where they order the EV vehicles, and while they're working on their charging infrastructure, the vehicles got there before the charging infrastructure. So this is, having Level 2 charging stations and DC fast chargers that we're installing can kind of be a supplement to charging stations while you have the gap. And that's if you have a plan to expand the EV fleet for the county. So that's what I have to say this morning, and I'll take any questions that you council may have.
Right.
Maybe more just a comment. I mean, thanks for coming. I think this is great. I mean, it's certain direction that we're heading with vehicles, and obviously you need that. I'll just say it from my own personal sort of experience, you know, I'm at this point in life where I sort of have a vehicle that's like five or six years old, and I'm kind of starting to look for that next vehicle. I'd like to be able, for it to be an electric vehicle, you know, one of my big questions is, you know, that opportunity to charge that vehicle, you know, is always a concern, particularly in a more rural area like this. You know, something like this certainly provides that opportunity. You know, it's a benefit to our citizens, to our county, with no cost to us as a county. I mean, I don't have to think about that too long. You know, I mean, that certainly works. Just out of curiosity, you know, this is, I've had this question asked before, and I don't know how to answer it. You know, if you've got an average electric vehicle, and you're charging at one of those two stations, I'll call it the basic or the fast charger, I mean, one, how long does that take? And what's that translate into, like dollars? Yeah, you know, I mean, if it takes me two hours to charge, you know, at 18 cents per kilowatt or whatever, I mean, yeah, I'm not a, I don't work in your industry. What's that mean? You know, my pay, is that $30 or is that $300, you know?
I can definitely answer that for you. So the average vehicle that we have, you know, currently out on the market, have a 60 kilowatt hour battery, which is about, range from 200 miles to 300 miles different vehicles. When you're looking at Level 2 charging stations, it will charge most vehicles in about four to five hours. When you're looking at DC fast chargers, up to 80% in about half an hour, but then they slows down to Level 2 rate. So it slows down. So it's basically internal car management battery system so that the batteries doesn't deteriorate quicker than it needs to. As for economics of, you know, I'm not a car salesman or the EV vehicle salesman, but I've been driving my company vehicles for commissioning, and I've kind of looked at the miles that I'm getting with the vehicle. So there, obviously, it's not miles per gallon, right? So we're looking at miles per kilowatt hours. So I'm constantly getting about 3.5 miles per kilowatt hours. And if I bring that down to, let me see, I had a note here, just that, you know, if I look at the Level 2 charging station, which is 18 cents per kilowatt hours, and if I just say that, okay, well, I'm going to get three miles per hour average, I'm looking at six cents per mile, right? Now, if I look at the comparable vehicle, I look at some Toyota vehicles, that's not non-hybrid, just a gas vehicle, probably the best you can get right now is about 30 miles per gallon. That's actually a small kind of market that I've been driving. And plus, if I'm estimating a $4 per gallon of gas, I'm looking at 13 cents per mile for those vehicles. So, you know, when you get an electric vehicle, we're looking at six cents per mile at our charging station, Level 2. In a gas station, you're looking at the 13 cents per mile. So I don't know if that answers your question, or that gives you a little frame of...
Well, just from a simplicity standpoint, if it took me, you know, it's four hours to charge it, then I just spent, what, at 18 cents on average, what would I just have spent at that station to charge my vehicle?
It's really depending on how much of empty, how much battery that you have.
Yeah, I'm almost empty.
So that's, you know, 60 kilowatt hours, right? So 60 kilowatt times the 16 cents. So I can't do my math in the head.
About $11.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, thank you, 11. Yeah, that's what I'm trying, yeah.
So that's about 300 miles. I mean, 200 miles to 300 miles range. It really depending on the weather as well. So the battery system does not do well in the cold winter, and especially if you crank the heat, it'll bring that...
John, out of the revenue that you derive from this, how much of that do you pay back to the county?
Zero.
You don't pay us anything back?
So there's a tax, there's a sales tax that's going through it, but right now, this is a Public Service Commission driven. As utilities out there, the rates are set by the Public Service Commission for us, so that's where we are at. As far as, you know, the behind-the-scenes tax out there, we don't, we're not really sure.
But you don't pay the county any money back for, out of the rate you get?
No, it's 18 cents per kilowatt hour. So we pay our energy, and then, you know, we may make a bit of profit. Actually, to tell the truth out there, we're not making any profit of any stations right now.
I can't believe Delmarva Power isn't making a profit.
Do you pay land rent, or?
No, I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, I love the idea of electric vehicles. I've read up on some of them, and I think some of them are cool, and it's fun to watch people build them, and some of those are faster as a race car than gas motors. But a couple weeks ago, I watched Delmarva Power put, I think, a dozen pumps at the Wawa up north. And I made a comment on social media for some dialogue, and I learned a lot. There was a lot of dialogue about that. But one thing I learned is that when people are using these electric vehicles, and they're buying the electric, and we mentioned it earlier about the highway user funds, so they're not buying gas, so they're not contributing to the highway user funds that we get back to repair our roads. So that's a concern that I have. And then, Mr. Holloway said about leasing the land or paying back the county some way. That's a thought.
As for tax-wise, I mean, that's really outside of DPL jurisdiction. I mean, it's a state and it's federal regulation item that, you know, I mean, if you wanted to talk some experts about, you know, how other counties and other states are doing things, we do have experts in that area. I was looking at that, you know, kind of working with other experiences, so we can definitely set another time for that, if you're interested in hearing about them.
You're not insinuating that we're being forced to do this, are you?
So, actually, we are...
No. Well, he's shaking his head no, and you're going, well...
PSC is, it is...
I was talking about the Wycomico County though.
They're being forced, you're being...
We're being forced to sell 100 and operate 100, because that's the Maryland state's goal, the PSC's goal.
This is just for, an opportunity for the county to kind of join with...
I said this before in kind of jest, but I guess I was really serious about it. You know, if we give up land on our public property that the taxpayers paid for, for free to Delmarva Power or Chop Tank or any other electric utility to sell electric, why shouldn't we give up land to a service station to sell gas? You know, I mean, it makes sense, you know, I mean, you're giving something, you know, no doubtly, electric vehicles are in the future, you know. I hope they sell enough of them that they make gas cheaper, you know, so. But, you know, for us to give up, you know, parking spaces that the taxpayers paid for and not receive any revenue out of it, I think is shorting the taxpayers of Wycomico County that's paid for, paid for these parking spaces over the years. The other problem, what happens if we have, say, a sold-out baseball game, a sold-out concert at the Civic Center? Who regulates who parks in these spaces if they're not being used to charge a car?
We currently don't have any regulation, or we don't monitor it. We do have a science that's saying that EV charging stations, now, state may have, maybe come with a regulation saying that, you know, they need to be reserved for their charging stations, but well, you know, DPL will not monitor that.
So, in other words, somebody could come along and need to charge a car and couldn't because somebody else has parked there?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
And I read in here that the Public Service Commission or Delmarva Power is asking the county to enforce parking regulations somehow?
No, we're not, we're not asking for that. It could come down from the state to do that, but yeah, right now, Delmarva Power, we're not, we're not a police department, we're not regular business. So, right now, what we try to do is, as a utility company, we're trying to expand the charging network so that EV community can be served better, and there's more adaptation to the EV vehicles. If the Wycomico wants to drive EV now, you know, may not have, you know, charging stations, charging networks, and, you know, there've been visitors going to Ocean City through the Salisbury, you know, there's a good opportunity for them to kind of visit some of your sites, some of your park locations.
Have you had any conversations with our county executive, acting county executive about this?
We reached out to John and offered, talked about the program, and he passed us on to Steve and Tony, so we met with Steve and Tony at the locations that were provided, you know, we didn't suggest the locations. They came to us with...
They suggested the location.
Right, and we met with them at each location and looked at parking spaces that would suit them, which would not be, you know, right up close to the building, it'd be furthest away, whatever parking spaces that were, they chose, we were fine with.
Well, last week's forum, he made the comment that, you know, charging, he didn't say charge, I guess the question was about hooking up charging stations. Acting county executive made the comment that they should be, it should be private enterprise with no government involvement, so I was just wondering where this was coming from. So, okay.
Thank you for the presentation. It was very informative, but I have a question. You made several comments. You referred to the places, the locations. You said, "We are putting the pumps in there," like it's already been approved. Has it already been approved?
We have installed 72 charging stations.
And I'm talking about installing them in these locations in Wycomico County?
So we have dealt with the city of Salisbury. The city of Salisbury has been very eager to work with us, so they were actually wanting to assist more, and same as Salisbury University. Salisbury University are the, are best utilized locations here.
That wasn't my question. My question was, when you were doing the presentation, you were talking about our locations, and you said that we are putting the pumps at the Civic Center, we're putting the pumps at the, I call them pumps, the charging stations, at the Shorebird Stadium. So that's why, I was just asking if it's been approved already.
No, it hasn't been approved, that's why we're here, to get approval through that.
I guess the wording...
Yes, sorry about that.
That's fine.
You say there's two types of chargers, but there are three types of chargers out there, right? Or have they, has one of them sort of become obsolete?
So you can say that, you know, you can actually charge it through your outlet, 120-volt outlet, they call that Level 1, where it's going to be probably taking 12 hours to 18 hours to charge a vehicle. So that's really for residential customers who is not driving far enough, but, you know, they're using maybe, you know, 10, 15 miles a day where they're plugged. So Level 2 charging stations, the upgrade to that, uses a 40 and 80 volt service.
Not, let me clarify, not referencing voltage, I'm referencing the connection. There are three different types of connectors based on whether or not you have a Volkswagen, whether it's a German model, or whatever it might be. So what type of connectivity are we talking about? Are we only going to be appealing to a certain brand of vehicle, or what?
So Level 2 charging stations there, that's a standard. So J1122, I can't remember the number exactly, but they're all common. So whether you get a BMW, Hyundai, Toyota, they're all going to have a same plug for the Level 2 charging stations.
Tesla.
Now Tesla is a different case, right? Tesla has their own...
So these stations won't be able to charge a Tesla?
No, now Tesla does sell their adapters to charge these. So Tesla users can utilize these charging stations. Now, when you come to the Level 3 DC fast chargers, that's where the, there's a Tesla standards, there's two different standards. There's a CCS combo, and then there's a Chademo units. Now, all the American vehicles are CCS combo. Some of the Japanese cars are still CCS, but they're kind of converting it. What we're doing is, our charging stations, our DC fast chargers, we're actually going to provide both plugs so that any type of vehicle can be charged to it. And then Tesla drivers who wants to use DC fast chargers, they can get Chademo adapter so that they can utilize that as well.
You'd also made a comment that each charger requires two spots. You're asking for 12 spots, so is that six chargers?
So we're looking at, so two at each locations, so there's five Level 2 charging stations and one, I'm sorry, nine Level 2 charging stations and one DC fast chargers. The nine charging stations that we have, we do need a two spot, two space for each because they can, they really serve two different vehicles at the same time. Fast chargers, they're normally, you can only, they have two ports, but only you can charge them. But it's nice to have a space down there so that, you know, once someone's done with 20 minutes, they can park there, wait for that next, the charging port. So that's why we ask for two space for each charging stations.
Also in the agreement, you're talking about, I guess, Wycomico County pays for the signage? Did I interpret that as correctly?
No, that's, yeah, that's wrong on that slide that we did. So we do provide the signage.
So we don't pay for the signage? Okay. And then there's a mention about free parking for five years, and then after five years. I wasn't quite sure what all that entailed.
Parking for five years? I'm not sure.
There's a comment in your presentation, free parking for five years. I didn't, wasn't quite sure what...
Yeah, I didn't understand that.
Are you talking about, is that the five years, this initial agreement for five years?
So from my understanding, well, I don't know which slide you're referring to, but it is, it is a five-year pilot program. So we're already in, two and a half years in. So commission can give us, you know, what to do with these charging stations at the end of it. They can either extend it, or they can, you know, turn it over to counties, or turn it over to, you know, private equities. We don't know exactly what the commission's going to decide on, and...
May I ask Tony to come up here? Tony, could you come up?
You done, John? I'm sorry. Or did I interrupt?
Not yet. I'm sorry.
I had a question for them too, John, when you're finished.
I'll try to...
I've got a question too.
I understand the fact that you were talking about providing a service. I do get that. I always, I always have a philosophical problem sometimes when we're talking about getting into particular businesses and involving government, et cetera. My concern is the fact that, and I thought it was very shocking when... first person that would be in favor of this, but then I realized, he's already, he's already got skin in the game. He's already got his chargers out there, and now he's sort of going to be competing with the federal government. And I have a real issue with that, you know, as I said, it's more of a philosophical issue. I try to be as pro-business as possible, but I do have concerns when we begin allowing businesses to come in and take advantage of this. I get the idea of easements. I always felt that, you know, you should probably pay for an easement. If you want it, you should probably pay for it. And you are doing a service, but then again, I think you're also competing with private enterprise. You know, the Royal Farms on Route 50, I was in the back of that, they had two chargers back there. Royal Farms has created an investment, and they're in Wycomico County. And I'm not quite sure it's our responsibility as a government body to then, you know, initiate a process with no costs involved that directly compete with other private enterprises. So that's, that's my philosophical concerns with this. All good intentions.
Right, no, I understand.
Yes. Joe?
Tony, we charge for parking at the airport, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So these charging stations, will they be in our lot that charges, or will they be somewhere else?
They are in our paid parking lot.
They will be in our paid parking lot. So if somebody wanted to just charge their car there, they would have to pay to park in the parking lot to charge their car. So they'd be paying to park and paying for electric, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. You know, in reflection to what John said, thank God I'm not old enough to remember this, but when the horse and buggy went out, and the cars came along, I don't think the government stood around and put up gas stations. I think that was a private enterprise type situation. Now, I may be wrong, maybe it was in some places, I'm not sure, but, you know, like he said, you know, for us to compete, I think when this, when there gets to be enough electric cars, that the demand is there, I think I might even want one at the antique store, you know, somebody can park at the antique store, and we'll put in a charging station.
Unfortunately, you're missing the whole point here. That's the whole incentive, that's why the Public Service Commission is doing this, is they're trying to incentivize the use of EV vehicles on the road.
I'm not missing the point.
And we're not competing with private at all. I mean, Royal Farms puts it at Royal Farms, because that brings people to Royal Farms. They're not going to put one at the Civic Center, they're not going to put one at our airport.
The one at the Civic Center and the airport competes with anyone who may go to Royal Farms, charge their car, and walk into Royal Farms.
But if you were at the Civic Center, you're not going to leave your car at Royal Farms, charge it while you're at a concert at the Civic Center.
You're not going to go to the Civic Center and leave your car there for four or five hours and go somewhere else either. You might not have a car when you get back.
But they have access to it, there is a concert at the Civic Center.
Oh, you had a comment you...
Yeah, I wanted to thank you for coming in. This was incredibly interesting and very informative. I was just wondering, do you have, are there projections for how many electric cars we'll have on the road, say, in 2025, or, I mean, I know we have roughly 100 right now in the county, but do you have, are you able to find any projections on what that's going to grow?
We don't have it, but I know the Public Service Commission and the Maryland State Highway has some studies.
I'll answer it for you. It's in your presentation, the state's targets, they want 300,000 zero emission vehicles on the road by 2025.
I'm thinking like this area. Is there any? And you may not have even touched on that.
We got 194 in the county now. Somerset's got 17. You don't want to put one in Somerset, do you?
We've actually put a couple in Somerset already, at four different locations.
Probably not working out, do you?
No, without... And that's the point of this program, so we're going into locations where, you know, private, probably charging, you know, vendors will not go into because there's no business there, right? But we have to promote the network to where, you know, people are not going to go. And you mentioned Royal Farms, and not to bash their exercise, but they have abandoned a lot of their electric charging stations because they don't know how to maintain it. So we are, you know, our maintenance program is, is out there, and, you know, the Way Maryland Public Service Commission is thinking, while talking to them about it, he thinks that bringing the utilities into these spaces will eventually bring the private entities more, and the competition, to create that competition. So that's, that's one of the things that Chairman's thinking about when he asks the utilities to come into this space.
I guess that was my question, when we're talking about the private entities, if we are anticipating having a growth of, you know, 10, 20% in the next two, three years, maybe we do need to increase installing these, so. Thank you, I appreciate coming in.
It's one of those things, you know, I always thought private enterprise, their responsibility is to address the needs of the public as a whole, more so than I think using a government entity to do that. And it's like Joe says, it's hard to say, I don't know whether the first electric lines that were put throughout the country were subsidized by the government. John, you may know, if you have any history of electricity, when, you know, Tesla or Einstein, they were putting their, their lines in, whether or not they...
I believe that is true. Back in the 20s, it was government subsidized, and it's like chopped, and all the co-ops are still government, because they're in the rural areas where it costs more to run lines, and there's not as many people. So the co-ops are still government subsidized today, so. But yeah, that's, you get your point. It's just going to be four parking spaces at each location, and we foresee you guys, you know, as there's more EVs on the road, you know, the county may be putting in their own eventually, and there is a lot of programs out there, like the Royal Farms in Wawa's, there's actually a program through the state, and they're not actually paying for those totally. There's actually a lot of EV program money available, so.
I just have a, I mean, and again, you could educate me further later with whatever information you might have, but I have a real aversion to competing with Royal Farms, no matter how, and they may not, they may not be able to handle it because they don't have the backing of the government to maybe help them with their management of it. And, you know, with the installation that Tesla's put in, and the investment that they've made, I don't know what they're paying the city of Salisbury to have their charging stations there, but I would imagine they may be paying, they may be paying a certain fee, and I wouldn't want to put them out of business either.
One thing, if you look at it, you know, there's a lot of app out there where, you One thing, if you look at it, you know, there's a lot of app out there where, you know, the EV communities actually track where the charging stations are. If you look at the map, eastern shore is actually quite lacking in the, you know, probably, the private charging stations here. So that's one of the reasons why we're kind of focusing on eastern shore as well. We have a program, 250 charging stations, right, now to the DPL is 100. So we've already installed a lot of the eastern shore, and then now we're kind of here. So.
It could be a destination location. I mean, you put the charging stations here, you're going to have people there. Instead of taking 95 straight up, they might go up 13 and they might stop in Salisbury to charge as opposed to going on. But we don't have any numbers as to whether that's feasible or how much each individual person charging is going to spend here. You know, I mean, Steve has to give you an evaluation every time he proposes an event here, any type of venue, that he has to say, we're expecting this many people and here's the benefit, the pros and the cons. It'd be nice to have something a little more in depth there, if at all possible.
Yeah, I just was going to say, I've heard the word compete. And from our lens, we're looking at this through the vein of equity, right? And when you talk about private equity monies, and I think about Shorebird Stadium, you know, what's the general population of through traffic at that facility? It's limited, right? It's limited ballgames, potentially concerts, but it's limited. And through our lens, it's opportunity for the county, right? It's opportunity for folks that are going to the ballgame to charge during the game. Think about it the same way with the airport, right? I mean, at that, at the airport, folks are going to show up, they're going to fly overnight. I mean, we all do that pretty regularly. Many of us do that regularly. You jump out of town for a day, you charge whatever it is and you come back. And the Civic Center as well, while it is a populated area, that parking lot is not regularly fully populated. And so we look at it through the vein of equity. We look at the rural nature of our community. And I will just say and reiterate that I am happy that, I'm from here. So for what it's worth, I'm born and bred right here on the eastern shore and very proximate to where we're sitting. I think it's fantastic because we're not seeing those private equity dollars migrate onto the shore, whereas you may see them more readily in the cities and in the urban areas. So as we think through this, we're thinking equity in the lens of, would private equity spend their dollars at Shorebird Stadium? Or can we create that amenity for the county?
Well, fine. But how about if they get there to charge their car up? Somebody's got their car parked there. There's no enforcement on who can park in those parking spaces.
And they leave it there.
And I would agree with that. And that's similar for handicap scenarios or whatever that may look like. I mean, but we're not enforcing that.
Right.
Larry? This is a work session, and this EV concept is very fascinating. And I learn something every day. And Mr. Cannon was talking about the different types of charging stations. And I mentioned the, I think it was 12 that they have at Wawa for Tesla, but they're for Tesla only. What about these charging stations? Are these charging stations, is it going to be up to, and I don't know this enough, but is it up to the car owner to bring their own adapter?
The Tesla owners, yes, they have to bring their own.
Okay, so Tesla, can you, if they have it. All right. So it's not going to be a separate Tesla charging station?
No, no.
And then, you mentioned two parking spaces somewhere, but I thought I read in here that one of the charging stations would be able to charge four vehicles?
So each charging station will have two vehicles at the same time?
Two vehicles.
Yes.
And how many parking spaces is that?
So two spaces for you.
So it'd be two?
Right.
Okay. And then we go back to the parking enforcement issue. If it's at the Civic Center and somebody decides to charge their vehicle, go in and watch a concert, and then the next person comes along and they can't charge their vehicle?
So one of the good things is that the app that we propose, and there's a lot of apps out there, they communicate each other. So they'll, it'll tell the EV drivers who's driving down there that is occupied. So they do have some options to take a look at. So a lot of these EV drivers look at technology to fill up their vehicles if they need to use their publics. They look at where the charging stations are, so they map out. If they're going with longer trips, they'll map, okay, this is a station that I want to use. If it's not there, I mean, they've got a couple of other stations around it, so that'll become a destination.
Can the app tell the car owner, your vehicle's charged, please move it?
So our network provider says that they can. We have not activated that, and we are thinking about that.
So it can be done?
Yes. So there could be a sort of charge for, you know, leaving the vehicle 30 minutes past there.
Sure.
The time. So, you know, that's something that we have to think about. Currently, you know, we have to, we have to propose that to the PCPSC. So we can't just add charge to our program.
And maybe that charge can go back to the county.
Yeah, that's something, you know, for the, that's something I can't make a decision on. That's probably the Public Service Commission.
Just a thought.
Someone mentioned getting on a, charging, getting on a plane and coming back the next day. I think that'd be.
Smoking time you got.
Yeah.
Questions? I'm done. Well, I think you've heard, you know, what the council's concerns might be. Any information that you might have to help alleviate some of those concerns, we'd appreciate it, however you may, you know, whatever you have in your volume of research, that'd be very helpful. I'd like to cooperate and try to move forward because I get it. But I share my concerns with you honestly because I also have those reservations.
So is there a, is there a repository of questions that you'd like to see us come back with as we work this program down to?
I think a lot of the issues that we asked today, the concerns that we had today, how they may kind of address that.
I think this needs to come from the county executive's office is where I think it needs to come from. It needs to come from the county executive's office to the council.
I'd like them to answer some of my concerns if they, you know.
No, I'm talking about if they bring, when it comes back, it needs to come from the county executive's office.
Probably will.
As a bill or resolution, certainly.
And it should, but to the question, I think that the repository, all of our questions maybe should be generated and passed on to you for the next work session.
We're happy to answer any questions. I mean, you know, we're, as Stephen stated, we've commissioned 72 stations of 100 in almost every county now in the state of Maryland on the Delmarva side. And we are certainly happy to answer any questions that you have. And if you have that list, we'll get you.
I got one more question. Can I send you a copy of the minutes?
Yeah, that would be great. That would be great. Thank you.
I have one last one. Have you talked to any of the other municipalities in Wycomico County, say Delmar, Fruitland, Mardella, Hebron? I mean, Wycomico County is a big county.
We have. We've reached out to Delmar also, Fruitland. They weren't interested at this time, just because they don't feel like they have the need because there's not many EV charger, EV charger cars in those municipalities. But other Cambridge, we have cited a couple in Cambridge. Ocean City already had 14, but we are still putting a couple more in Ocean City through the program there if they were interested. We're actually, Snow Hill is, has some interest, put some in Denton.
It seems like we have a concentration already in Salisbury.
We have a few in Salisbury already, but it is the hub of the eastern shore and we're majority of the.
Right. I understand that. But, you know, how about the folks that, you know, say they're coming down from Baltimore and they can't make it to Salisbury? You know, they'd need one in Mardella or Sharp Town or Hebron, you know?
There's a couple, there was already a couple already on the shore before we got the program. Millie's Restaurant in Vienna has a couple. There's a restaurant in Cambridge. Town of Hurlock actually has some at the, two at the train station.
You said Vienna's got some?
Vienna, Millie's Roadhouse Restaurant. They were put in like 10 years ago by, I think when the program first started, a gentleman got ahold of the program. There was a grant. He came down to the shore and was able to put one at, I can't think of the name of the restaurant, just off of Main Street. Cambridge has one. Like I said, Hurlock has a couple. Millie's has a couple. The town of Ocean City got a few. So there was already a couple spread out, but that was it for the entire shore. So, but yeah, we reached out to everybody to see if they're interested. If they are, we follow up and see any location they would consider having the charging stations.
I see these things, well, kind of like gas pumps, but you know, your Royal Farms, Wawa's, 7-Elevens, whatever, they have the vacuum cleaners, they have the air pumps, you know. So I see it as being something, like we were talking before, that these private companies can make money off of. And I don't know that we should be, like John said, competing with them some, anyway.
Charging stations are a little bit different because a lot of, a lot of the communities, a lot of EV drivers will charge it from home. So, you know, you're talking about different way, totally different way of charging, you know, your vehicles. And it's almost like your phone, right? Not relying on a public gas stations to do your charging needs. And the other thing I would do when I mentioned it, that we're actually reserving six for the Wycomico County right this time. But we need probably to move on quickly. If the county's not interested in there, we do have other jurisdictions who wants the charging stations. So we've actually kind of dwindled down the Wycomico County. When we started up with John, the last, in March time, we actually had to probably double the numbers because of how the counties wanted it more. And we've been working there, we've actually shrunk that properly. So just a timing perspective. And we also have our needs to make sure that we meet our Public Service Commission deadline, so that we have to install all these charging stations within the five-year period, which means we've only got about a year and a half left.
Did you say if we wanted these, we needed to move quickly on them?
Well, to quickly. So we do, we do have a reserve there. And there's other counties knocking on the door, but we are actually holding them off right at this time.
So the answer is we have time to manage the conversation and answer the questions that you've asked and work that down. There's a finite window relative to the pilot program. So we can manage the conversation, answers the questions that you all have asked today. You can work down your decision tree relative to that. But it is a finite number, and we will have to work with other entities. We've reserved six at this point for the county. We have a full allotment. We have, we have the, we have locations for all 100 at this point. The six for the county inclusive, and we'll work that down. But the timing is significant because there is a window around the pilot program, but we have time to answer the questions and still go through the iterations of permitting and building out.
Okay, all right. We appreciate you coming in, taking the time. Thank you very much. And we'll look forward to hearing back from you.
Thank you for the presentation.
Who did I reach out to for the minutes?
Mr. Sorely.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope. Mr. Dunn, I want to move this on, try to get this done. He's been here all morning. I want to give him, I understand that, but he's been here all morning, and I'd like to at least give him a half an hour.
I bet a 10-minute break. I mean, we've been sitting here since 10 o'clock.
You guys need to eat?
You can come back, Michael? You'll be okay with that?
Tell me when.
All right.
I'm starving like you all are.
What's your timeframe?
This is mentioned on the top.
What's your timeframe, Joe? A half hour?
Yeah.
Okay. Michael, we're going to take a half hour, take a half hour recess, yes.
For lunch.
You can join us if you'd like. I think a recess for half an hour. Thanks. across the country. We're going to, you know, we're going to have 10,000 chargers in the next week, whatever. And Elon Musk, you know, replied, he was adamantly opposed to it. I thought, I thought he'd be the first person that would be in favor of this. But then I realized, he's already, he's already got skin in the game. He's already got his chargers out there. And now he's sort of going to be competing with the federal government. And I have a real issue with that. You know, as I said, it's more of a philosophical issue. I try to be as pro-business as possible. But I do have concerns when we begin allowing businesses to come in and take advantage of this. I get the idea of easements. I always felt that, yeah, you should probably pay for an easement. If you want it, you should probably pay for it. And you are doing a service. But then again, I think you're also competing with private enterprise. You know, the Royal Farms on Route 50, I was in the back of that. They had two chargers back there. Royal Farms has created an investment, and they're in Wycomico County. And I'm not quite sure it's our responsibility as a government body to then, you know, initiate a process with no costs involved that directly compete with other private enterprises. So that's, that's my philosophical concerns with this. All good intentions.
Right. No, I understand.
Yes. Joe?
Tony, we charge for parking at the airport, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So these charging stations, will they be in our lot that charges or will they be somewhere else?
They are in our paid parking lot.
They will be in our paid parking lot. So if somebody wanted to just charge their car there, they would have to pay to park in the parking lot to charge their car. So they'd be paying to park and paying for electric, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. You know, in reflection to what John said, thank God I'm not old enough to remember this, but when the horse and buggy went out and the cars came along, I don't think the government stood around and put up gas stations. I think that was a private enterprise type situation. Now, I might be wrong. Maybe it was in some places. I'm not sure. But, you know, like he said, you know, for us to compete, I think when this, when there gets to be enough electric cars, the demand is there, I think I might even want one at the antique store, you know, somebody can park at the antique store. We'll put in a charging station.
Unfortunately, you're missing the whole point here. That's the whole incentive. That's why the Public Service Commission is doing this. They're trying to incentivize the use of EV vehicles on the road.
I'm not, I'm not missing the point.
And we're not competing with private at all. I mean, Royal Farms puts it at Royal Farms because that brings people to Royal Farms. They're not going to put one at the Civic Center. They're not going to put one at our airport.
The one at the Civic Center and the airport competes with anyone who may go to Royal Farms, charge their car and walk into Royal Farms.
But if you were at the Civic Center, you're not going to leave your car at Royal Farms, charge it while you're at a concert at the Civic Center.
You're not going to go to the Civic Center and leave your car there for four or five hours and go somewhere else either. You might not have a car when you get back.
But they have access to it. There is a concert at the Civic Center.
Oh, you had a comment.
Yeah, I wanted to thank you for coming in. This was incredibly interesting and very informative. I was just wondering, do you have, are there projections for how many electric cars we'll have on the road, say in 2025? Or, I mean, I know we have roughly 100 right now in the county, but do you have, are you able to find any projections on what that's going to grow?
We don't have it, but I know the Public Service Commission and the Maryland State Highway has some studies.
I'll answer it for you. It's in your own presentation. The state's targets, they want 300,000 zero emission vehicles on the road by 2025.
I'm thinking like this area. Is there any? And you may not have even talked about that.
We got 194 in the county now. Somerset's got 17. You don't want to put one in Somerset it, do you?
We've actually put a couple in Somerset already at four different locations.
Probably not working out, do you?
No, without.
And that's not the point of this program. So we're going into the locations where, you know, private, probably charging, you know, vendors will not go into because there's no business there, right? But we have to promote the network to where, you know, people are not going to go. And you mentioned Royal Farms, and not to, not to bash their exercise, but they have abandoned a lot of their electric charging stations because they don't know how to maintain it. So we are, you know, our maintenance program is almost beyond that. It's almost out there. And, you know, the Waymay Maryland Public Service Commission is thinking, while I was talking to him about it, he thinks that bringing the utilities into these spaces will eventually bring the private entities more, and then competition, to create that competition. So that's, that's one of the things that Chairman's thinking about when he asked the utilities to come into this space.
I guess that was my, my question when we're talking about the private entities. If we are anticipating having a growth of, you know, 10%, 20% in the next two, three years, maybe we do need to increase installing these. So thank you. I appreciate coming in.
It's one of those things. You know, I always thought private enterprise, their responsibility is to address the needs of the public as a whole, more so than I think using a government entity to do that. And it's like Joe says, it's hard to say. I don't know whether the first electric lines that were put throughout the country were subsidized by the government. John, you may know if you have any history of electricity, when, you know, Tesla or Einstein, they were putting their, their lines in, whether or not they
I believe that is true. Back in the 20s, it was government subsidized and like chopped. And all the co-ops are still government, because they're in the rural areas where it costs more to run lines and there's not as many people. So the co-ops are still government subsidized today. So, but yeah, that's, you get your point. It's just going to be four parking spaces at each location. And we foresee you guys, you know, as there's more EVs on the road, you know, the county may be putting in their own eventually. And there is a lot of programs out there, like the Royal Farms and Wawa's, there's actually a program through the state, and they're not actually paying for those totally. There's actually a lot of EV program money available. So.
I just have a, I mean, and again, you could educate me further later with whatever information you might have, but I have a real aversion to competing with Royal Farms no matter how, and they may not, they may not be able to handle it because they don't have the backing of the government to maybe help them with their management of it. And, you know, with the installation that Tesla's put in and the investment that they've made, I don't know what they're paying the city of Salisbury to have their charging stations there. But I would imagine they may be paying, they may be paying there, but I would imagine they may be paying, they may be paying a certain fee, and I wouldn't want to put them out of business either.
One thing, if you look at it, you know, there's a lot of app out there where, you know, the EV community is actually tracking where the charging stations are, if you look at the map, eastern shore is actually quite lacking in the, you know, public, the private charging stations here, so that's one of the reasons why we're kind of focusing on eastern shore as well. We have a program, 250 charging stations, right, now, to the DPL is 100, so we've already installed a lot inside of the, the Del Mar, the eastern shore, and then now we're, we're kind of here.
It could be a destination location, I mean, you put the charging stations here, you're going to have people there, instead of taking 95 straight up, they might go up 13, and they might stop in Salisbury to charge as opposed to going on, but we don't have any numbers as to whether that's feasible, or how much each individual person charging is going to spend here, you know, I mean, Steve has to give you an evaluation every time he proposes an event here, any type of, of a venue, that he has to say, we're expecting this many people, and here's the benefit, the pros and the cons, it'd be nice to have something a little more in-depth there, if at all possible.
Yeah, I just was going to say, I've heard the word compete.
Yeah.
And, and from our lens, we're looking at this through the vein of equity, right, and when you talk about private equity monies, and I think about Shorebird Stadium, you know, what's the general population of through traffic at that facility? It's limited, right? It's limited ballgames, potentially concerts, but it's limited, and through our lens, it's opportunity for the county, right, it's opportunity for folks that are going to the ballgame to charge during the game. Think about it the same way with the airport, right, I mean, at that, at the airport, folks are going to show up, they're going to fly overnight, I mean, we all do that pretty regularly, many of us do that regularly, you jump out of town for a day, you charge whatever it is, and you come back, and, and the Civic Center as well, while it is a populated area, that parking lot is not regularly fully populated, and, and so we look at it through the vein of equity, we look at the rural nature of our community, and I will just say and reiterate that I am happy that, I'm from here, so, for what it's worth, I'm born and bred right here on the eastern shore, and very proximate to where we're sitting, I, I think it's fantastic, because we're not seeing those private equity dollars migrate onto the shore, whereas you may see them more readily in the cities and in the urban areas. So a, as we think through this, we're thinking equity in the lens of, would private equity spend their dollars at Shorebird Stadium, or can we create that amenity for the county?
Well, fine, but how about if they get there to charge their car up, somebody's got their car parked there, there's no enforcement on who can park in those parking spaces?
And they leave it there.
And I would agree with that, and that's similar for handicap scenarios or whatever that may look like, I mean, but we're not enforcing that.
Right. This is a work session, and this EV concept is very fascinating, and I, I learn something every day, and Mr. Cannon was talking about the different types of charging stations, and I mentioned the, I think it was 12, that they have at Wawa for Tesla, but they're for Tesla only. What about these charging stations? Are these charging stations, is it going to be up to, and I don't know this enough, but is it up to the car owner to bring their own adapter?
The Tesla owners, yes, they have to bring their own.
Okay, so Tesla, can you use that if they have it? All right, so it's not going to be a separate Tesla charging station?
No, no.
And then, you mentioned two parking spaces somewhere, but I thought I read in here that it, one of the charging stations would be able to charge four vehicles?
So each charging station will have two vehicles at the same time?
Two vehicles.
Yes.
And how many parking spaces is that?
So two, two spaces for you.
So it'd be two?
Right.
Okay. And then we go back to the parking enforcement issue, if it's at the Civic Center and somebody decides to charge their vehicle and go in and watch a concert, and then the next person comes along and they can't charge their vehicle?
So one of the good things is that the app that we've proposed, and, and there's a lot of apps out there, they communicate each other, so they'll, it'll tell the EV drivers who's driving down there that is occupied, so they do have some options to take a look at, so a lot of these EV drivers look at technology to, to fill up their vehicles if they need to do, use their public's. They look at the, where the charging stations are, so they map out, if they're going with longer trips, they'll, they'll map, okay, this is a situation that I want to use, if it's not there, I mean, they got a couple of other stations around it, so that'll become a destination.
Can, can the app tell the car owner, your vehicle's charged, please move it?
So our, our network provider says that they can, we have not activated that, and we are thinking about that.
So it can be done?
Yes. So there could be a surcharge for, you know, leaving the vehicle 30 minutes past their time, so, you know, that's something that we have to think about. Currently, you know, we have to, we have to propose that to the PCPSC, so we can't just add charge to our program.
And maybe that charge can go back to the county.
Yeah, that's something, you know, for the, that's something I can't make a decision on, that's probably the Public Service Commission has.
Just a thought.
Someone, someone mentioned getting on a, you know, charging, getting on a plane and coming back the next day, I think that'd be.
Smoking time you got.
Yeah.
Questions? Well, I think you've heard, you know, what the, what the council's questions and concerns might be, any information that you might have to help alleviate some of those concerns, we'd appreciate it, however you may, you know, whatever you have in your volume of research, that'd be very helpful. I, I'd like to cooperate and try to move forward, because I get it, but I, I share my concerns with you honestly, because I also have those reservations.
So is there a, is there a repository of questions that you'd like to see us come back with as we work this program down to?
I think a lot of the issues that we asked today, the concerns that we had today, how they may kind of address that.
I think this needs to come from the county executive's office, is where I think it needs to come from. It needs to come from the county executive's office to the council.
I'd like to answer, I'd like them to answer some of my concerns if they, you know.
No, I'm talking about if they bring, when it comes back, it needs to come from the county executive's office.
Probably will, when it comes to the resolution.
As a, as a bill or resolution, certainly.
And, and it should, but to the question, I, I think that the repository, all of our questions maybe should be generated and passed on to you for the next work session.
We're happy to answer any questions, I mean, you know, we're, as Stephen stated, we're, we've commissioned 72 stations of 100 in, in almost every county now in, in the state of Maryland on the Del Marva side, and, and we are certainly happy to answer any questions that you have, and if you have that list, we'll get you.
I got one more question.
Can I send you a copy of the minutes?
Yeah, that would be great. That would be great. Sure, thank you.
I have one last one. Have you talked to any of the other municipalities in Waukesha County, say Del Mar, Fruitland, Mardella, Hebron? I mean, Waukesha County is a big county.
We have, we've reached out to Del Bar also, Fruitland, they weren't interested at this time, just because they don't feel like they have the need, because there's not many EV charger, EV charger cars in, in those municipalities, and.
Their fleets.
But other, other Cambridge, we have cited a couple in Cambridge, Ocean City already had 14, but we are still putting a couple more in Ocean City through the program there if they were interested. We're actually, Snow Hill is, has some interest, put some in Denton.
It seems like we have a concentration already in Salisbury.
We have a few in Salisbury already, but it is the hub of the eastern shore and the majority of the.
Right, I understand that, but, you know, how about the folks that, you know, say they're coming down from Baltimore and they can't make it to Salisbury, you know, they'd need one in Mardella or Sharp Town or Hebron, you know?
There's a couple, there was already a couple already on the shore before we got the program. Millie's Restaurant in Vienna has a couple, there's a restaurant in Cambridge, town of Hurlock actually has some at the, two at the train station.
You said Vienna's got some?
Vienna, Millie's Roadhouse Restaurant.
Now, does she?
They were put in like 10 years ago by, I think when the program first started, a gentleman got a hold of the program, there was a grant, he came down to the shore and was able to put one at a, I can't think of the name of the restaurant, just off of Main Street, Cambridge has one, like I said, Hurlock has a couple, Millie's has a couple, the town of Ocean City got a few, so there was already a couple spread out, but that was it for the entire shore. So, but yeah, we, we reach out to everybody to see if they're interested, if they are, we follow up and see any location they would consider having the charging stations.
I see these things, well, kind of like gas pumps, but you know, your Royal Farms, Wawa's, 7-Elevens, whatever, they have the vacuum cleaners, they have the air pumps, you know, that, so I see it as being something, like we were talking before, that these private companies can make money off of, and I don't know that we should be, like John said, competing with them some, anyway.
Charging stations are a little bit different, because a lot of, a lot of the communities, a lot of EV drivers will charging from home, so you know, you're, you're going to talk about different way, totally different way of charging, you know, your vehicles, and it's almost like your phone, right, not, not relying on a public gas stations to do your charging needs. And the other thing I would do when I mentioned it, that we're actually reserving six for the Waukesha County right this time, but we, it'd probably be moving quickly, if the county's not interested in there, we do have other, other jurisdictions who wants, wants the charging stations. So we've actually kind of dwindled down the Waukesha County. When we started with John, the last, what, in, in March time, we actually had probably doubled, doubled the numbers, because of how the counties wanted it more, and, and we've been working there, we've actually shrunk that properly. So, so just, just in timing perspective, and we also have our needs to make sure that we meet our Public Service Commission deadline, so that we have to install all these charging stations within the five-year period, which means we only got about a year and a half to left.
Did you say if we wanted these, we needed to move quickly on them?
Well, to be quickly, so we do, we do have a reserve there, and there's other, other counties knocking on door, but we are actually holding them off right at this time.
So the answer is we have time to manage the conversation and answer the questions that you've asked and work that down. There's a finite window relative to the pilot program. So we can manage the conversation, answers the questions that you all have asked today, you can work down your decision tree relative to that, but it is a finite number, and we will have to work with other entities. We've reserved six at this point for the county, we have a full allotment, we have,